First person that would want to speak would be Craig Stevens. Can I hear? All right. Howard Hannan. This would be for questions only, since Williams is the DEP, and then one follow-up. Go ahead. Is that on, Howard?
Check one, two.
That's Howard?
Yes. We were told at the New Milford Open House by Matt Swift, project manager of Constitution, this site will be for four engines, Caterpillar engines. In Franklin, New York, at the open house, we were told by Matt Swift, five Caterpillar engines. Both times Charlie Brown, the FERC rep, on hand concurred with the answers. What is the accurate number? Thank you.
I'll be honest, I'm not...
There you go.
We're not real familiar with everything to do with Constitution. We're definitely here to answer any questions around the central compressor station. So, I don't know if, is that a question about what's at this site?
How many engines are you permitting for on this site?
This site.
This, excuse me. This application has three engines and one turbine in it.
Oh.
We also have a 3516B which will be used as an emergency generator backup.
So that'll be four engines, or three?
There'll be three engines to compress the gas, and one as an emergency backup generator. And one turbine.
Follow-up. Okay. Can I pronounce this name? Mark Schmeling? Mark? You signed up previously? Sent an email? Want to come up? Mark? Okay. Mark, are you Mark?
I am Mark.
Schmeling? Okay, come on up, Mark. Right up to the podium. Right up to the microphone. You have a question and then a follow-up. No signs, Mark. Do you want to put the sign down?
It's a photograph.
No photographs. No photographs. It's no photographs, Mark, okay? You can submit it later. Thank you. You can submit it later, Mark.
It's very hard to submit something like this.
You could submit it later, Mark. These are the ground rules. Everyone's following the ground rules. That includes you. If you're not going to follow the ground rules, I'm going to ask you to sit down and leave. You've got to put the photo down, Mark, okay? You can submit it later afterwards. I'm not going to let you move on.
These folks won't see the photograph?
I'm not going to let you move on until you put the photo down.
These folks won't see the photograph of Pam Judy, who got poisoned by a compressor station.
Mark, you've been asked to put the photo down, and that's the rules. Everyone's following the rules. I'm not going to let you continue. Put the photo down. You can submit it at the end of the hearing, okay? I think everyone got a look at it. You can put the photo down now and ask your question, please. Thank you very much.
You said no signs.
Okay, Vera, you're out of line, so you can go on over there, okay? Go ahead, Mark, ask your question.
I don't have a question.
Well, then, if you want to offer testimony, that's in the second part of the meeting. You have a testimony?
Okay. Thank you.
Sign gets put away, Mark. That's the rules. Those are the rules. Okay. Next person we have who's signed up previously is Matt Walker. Get a question, Matt?
Will Williams sign on to EPA's Natural Gas Star program via an official partner?
Repeat that one more time. Repeat that?
Would Williams sign on to be part of EPA's Natural Gas Star program and become an official partner of that program? It's a program that lays out some of the best available technologies and asks companies to voluntarily sign on to be part of that program.
We've evaluated the program, and a lot of our practices are very consistent with the program, but right now, we're not going to apply for it.
And my follow-up question is why? If you're already using the technologies, why not become an official partner?
Due to the additional time and effort and cost associated with participating in the program, we've just decided not to participate in it this time.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Now, the people that signed up tonight, if your name's not on the list, that's okay, because when I get through this list, I'll ask you to come up and ask a question, and we'll go back around. Kathy McNulty, want to go up and ask a question? Okay, you can wait, absolutely. Albert, from Sandy, New York. And Albert, your last name is spelled C-R-U-D?
C-R-U-D-O.
D-O? Okay.
My question is, is there any chance that this application's going to be denied?
Certainly, we haven't issued it yet. We're looking into the comments right now.
And those comments hold weight?
Certainly. We'll have a comment response document addressing everyone.
Thank you. Bureau of Commerce.
I'd like to know what pipelines are going into the central compressor station, the Williams Central Station? Is it just what you pointed out on the map, or is it also the Constitution Pipeline? Will that be hooked into the compressor station?
What pipelines would be?
Definitely initially, we've got a handful of pipelines that come from the wells on the gathering side. The discharge line initially will be, as demonstrated there on the map. I understand there is an application out for the Constitution Pipeline. Should that be approved, there is a likelihood that it would be an additional takeaway from this facility.
Okay, before we move on, sir, in the back, there's no signs allowed in the auditorium, so you want to take the sign outside into the hallway. That's the rule of the hearing. Out in the hallway. Thank you. That's fine. You're out in the hallway. No signs are allowed in the auditorium. I think you know that from our last meeting. Okay. Christopher Acker, Acker, Bridgewater Township? Come on, sir, Chris? Good. Ask a question?
Could you tell us where the compressor station is located in relationship to population center? I'm not, sort of know where it is, but not quite sure.
The location, DEP has Brooklyn and Bridgewater Townships straddling both. Go ahead.
It's approximately three to four miles southeast of Montrose. It's not close to any large population source.
Follow-up questions, sir? Okay. David Plannick, from Franklin Township. David?
Pointed out that the gathering line should be connected via this compressor to the Springville Line. Is that correct?
Via a line that we call the Central Line.
And the Central Line is, but is only going to Springville. Is that the case?
The Central Line that runs south out of this location travels down to Springville Township, where it connects to the Springville Line. At that point, the gas can either be delivered through Springville to Transco, or at that point, there's an interconnect with the Tennessee 300 line.
But...
Okay, sir. One follow-up?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that was your one follow-up.
Just a clarification.
Okay. Go ahead. I'll let you ask this last one.
Is this bidirectional capability in this compressor station?
It's not necessarily bidirectional, because you've got the, on the suction side of the station, you've got pipelines coming in from the field, from the wells. And so, you'll have a suction side of the station from the field, from the wells, that will then be compressed and dehydrated. And then, on the discharge side, it will go south on the Central Line toward the Springville Line.
Only side. Is that correct?
That will definitely be the only takeaway initially. If other folks have projects that come pick gas up on the discharge side of that, then we would definitely entertain that, because more takeaways are advantageous.
Okay. Thank you, sir. You can ask when I go around. Dr. Reverend Ellen Sokolow? Sokolow?
This is for the DEP reps.
Sure.
I'd like to know what the results are, or where I can find the results of your public health impacts, your environmental impact studies, your noise level studies, your methodology for air quality monitoring, your economic impact studies, and what are you doing to concretely protect your employees, who are mandated by their job, from issuing violations to the gas and oil industries?
Well, we're going to talk about the central compressor station.
This is specifically related to that?
I can give you some contact information after this meeting portion.
Have those things been done?
We did some short-term studies up in Susquehanna County, Bradford County, and Washington County down in the Pittsburgh area. We are doing a long-term health study down in the Washington area now that started in July, and I think it's going to go up to next July. We are putting in some VOC monitors in Wyoming and Susquehanna County, starting in around January for one year or more, each location, to do some studying. So, that's some of the stuff that's going on now. I can get you the results of the studies that have taken place here in Susquehanna, Bradford, and down in the Pittsburgh area. I can at least give you information, you know, on our website to get that.
Okay.
We also have our air quality monitoring stations, Wilkes-Barre and Scranton, and other locations in the valley, where you can get online and see continuous data that's updated hourly, so you can see hour by hour all the data for NOx, SO2, volatile organic compounds, particulate ozone. So, I can give you some of the information later. Noise, we don't regulate noise, so that's something that the DEP doesn't really get involved, and that's more of our local municipality ordinance-type stuff.
Economic impact, we don't involve?
Yeah. Economic, we don't get involved in unless it's a major project based on emissions, and some of that gets involved. But these are all under thresholds that don't involve some of that.
Local Chamber of Congress might be able to help you out with that.
Okay. So, the last part of that question is, are you doing something to protect your employees from repercussions from the gas and oil industry when they file?
We get, we have our complaint line. We investigate. Our inspectors are out at these facilities frequently. If they find violations, we deal with it. We're not being told not to issue violations. So, I don't know how else to answer that. You know, we have ethics and things like that. We're professionals. If there's a violation, they're going to address it. There's a chain of command. There's paperwork that's filled out on the site. Obviously, a lot of people have been doing file reviews, write-to-no request, and all that's public information that they can see and find and look into. So, we're not being told not to issue violations. If we find them, NOLVs will be issued.
So, I have like six follow-up questions.
Okay. Just wondering. Well, you asked for one more follow-up question, then I'm going to have you to sit down, because I've got more people I have to.
The first follow-up question is, in the places that you have been doing monitoring and impact studies of the whole range, how close are these to existing compressor stations?
Well, when we did the Susquehanna study a couple of years ago, they were right at the sites of the drilling and the compressor stations. Like I said, that was short-term. That was several weeks. I forget exactly. I mean, it might have been six weeks or so, or less. But that was right at the site. We don't have nothing right now that's continuously monitoring. The closest is Scranton in the Wilkes-Barre area.
I think they're doing it.
They're certainly looking into it. Like I said, the VOC monitor is the next step.
Thank you. Thank you. Terry Black. Is Terry here? No? Okay. All right. Is there anyone in the audience, before I go around a second time, that did not sign up and would like to come up and speak? Okay. And again, I forgot to remind you, but if you come up to the podium and just say your name for this denographer.
Okay.
And it's one reminder, but please don't talk over people when they're speaking. Thank you.
Can I sign off to testify also?
Sure. When we have a break, of course.
All right. And this is a question for Williams. At the open, a statement first and a question. At the open house, Matt Swift, who is a project manager for the Constitution Pipeline, did say that the Williams Central Station adjacent to the Newton Hill Cemetery is slated to be the beginning of the Constitution Pipeline. And I wanted to ask you, when you go to sign people up for right-of-ways, do you explain to them what a Class 1 area is and what an HCA is? A high-consequence area, and by virtue of signing up there in both of those categories. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, hang on. Rebecca Roder, correct?
R-O-T-O-R.
E-R. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Mike.
No, I think when we talk to folks about the right-of-way, they definitely have a lot of questions around pipeline safety, public safety, different things like that. We definitely don't hide any discussion around area class locations, if that helps to describe how the pipeline is designed, or what we intend to put in. We have those discussions. I don't know for a fact if the land agents have a script that they read through that specifically addresses that, but I do know that we do want to make an effort. We do attempt either through landowner meetings or right-of-way owner meetings to have those conversations, to help them understand how we're going to operate the line.
Well, just, could you please tell us what an HCA is and what the FERC guidelines are for Class 1?
Yeah. I do think that we're here talking about the air permit for the central air compressor station, and so, this discussion around the Constitution Pipeline is...
Would you please answer your question? Or if you're not answering, high-consequence area is determined by formula, industry has...
Okay. Is that, are you have a question? Or you can offer testimony. He's trying to answer your question.
So, you're not going to answer?
He's offered you an answer.
Do you know what an HCA is?
I know what an HCA is. It's not relevant to this discussion tonight.
That's your answer.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else who wants to come up? Sir? You in the back, and then sir, you in the front. Go ahead, in the back. Yeah, you first, and then the gentleman.
I'm going to walk around this way.
No, no, no. I think I called your name.
Himper?
You first, and then you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay. My name is William Houston. W-H-U-S-T-O-N. And my question, I didn't come with a prepared question, but one arose from what I heard today. So, given that earlier question, the response was that you had done kind of like some minimal studies. She gave a litany of studies, economic study, you know, long-term, you know, socioeconomic studies. Apparently, there were some small studies that had been done. They didn't sound like they were comprehensive. And also, that there were some studies in progress. So, given that, and given that there seems to be a lot of anecdotal evidence of serious environment, long-term environmental consequences due to these compressor stations, and also health consequences. So, my question is, is it prudent to move forward with this process? This question is really for DEP. Is it prudent to move forward with this process, given that we don't have complete existing studies in place, and lots of anecdotal evidence that there are a lot of harmful consequences? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. All I can say is, on the short-term studies, they found no evidence of any health effects that would be imminent in the area. We're verifying long-term, just, you know, to be certain with, you know, the public requests. We look at every station separately. There's regulations that apply, invest available technology. The facilities meet some of these requirements. We handle it that way.
The two existing problems that I would say, there is lots of anecdotal, and maybe even some scientific studies about. Number one is force.
Okay. Is there any question in there?
Yes.
For testimony? Okay.
Well, it's just a follow-up. I don't feel like I got a complete answer. I point to a health study that was recently, came out of Texas, that showed that cancer rates were down, except for one place, and it was the place for the compressor stations, that I believe was the Dallas Fort Worth area.
Right. I think the gas is a little different, or a lot different from what you're seeing in Texas compared to up here in the Northeast. A lot drier gas, but we have our toxic people, toxicologists in Harrisburg, that are doing a lot of this data and emissions, and so far, they don't see any indication that there's any health concern.
Okay, sir, you want to... Just say anything, your name.
Leland Snider.
Artis?
Leland Snider, L-E-L-A-N-D, S-N-Y-D-E-R.
Thank you.
Okay. My question is basically, and it directly relates to the compressor station. We know that the fracking fluid contains toluene, benzene, diesel fuel. All these have very low vapor pressures. Where, what is the life cycle of these? Exactly where are they exiting the system? Are they exiting at the condenser tank, saline tank, at the actual drill site, or is there a second conditioning at the compressor?
You're talking about the fracking fluids from the well pad. Love that.
Yes, and also...
Well, let me answer the first part first.
Well, no, I want to follow up, but I want to have them make a statement if they're qualified to answer this question, and are they representative of the company?
That's your fault.
No, it's not.
Yeah, that's your question.
Well, okay.
Go ahead. You can answer the question.
Shut up. Can you repeat the first question again? Toluene, benzene, diesel fuel, all low vapor pressure. They're going in with the fracking fluids. What's the life cycle of these? Where are they exiting the system? Are they exiting at the well pad somewhere, or are they exiting in the conditioning unit at the compressor? And are you qualified to answer this question?
As far as the air permit goes, we take gas samples of the gas that comes into our compressor station on an annual basis, and we analyze that through an extended gas analysis to determine the components of VTECs and other constituents. And we find very, very little of those components within our gas stream. In fact, I haven't seen any benzene within our gas samples taken to date. Where does it exit? I can't tell you what happens upstream of our compressor stations in the well pad.
Go ahead.
Okay. Second is, if I was, let's say, 10, let's say, who knows, 500 feet away from the compressor station, downwind. If I did a standard test, air test, for formaldehyde, exactly what concentration do you think I'd find in the air? And there are standard tests available to do this, usually available to farmers.
I'm not aware of any testing that has been done 500 feet downwind permitting compressor stations, but it's a minor source permit. And when you get a major source permit, you do ambient air quality studies and modeling. Since it's a minor source, I would think there probably would be very little formaldehyde, VOCs, or any constituents in the air.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Sir, right over here in the way.
My name is Eugene Marner, M-A-R-N-E-R. To confirm what Rebecca Roder said earlier, Matt Swift, the program director for the Constitution Pipeline, told me at the open house in Franklin that this compressor station was the beginning of the Constitution Pipeline. If so, why isn't this compressor station part of the Constitution Pipeline proposal?
The central pipeline, or the central compressor station that the application is for is a compressor station that has merits with or without the Constitution Pipeline. It has been planned before the Constitution Pipeline. If the Constitution Pipeline never gets built, it'll be utilized for moving gas from Susquehanna County south to the Transco Pipeline and to the Tennessee Gas Pipeline. There are additional markets in New York to the north that I understand the folks from Constitution would like to be able to take gas from this point to the north. And so, I'm not 100% clear on all the details of their application, but I do understand they're wanting to pick up gas from the discharge side of this compressor station.
You say the folks from Constitution. Aren't you the folks from Constitution? You're Williams.
Yeah. Okay. Well, it's not interrupting. In this room.
Yeah. Just to clarify, there are a couple of different business units within Williams. We're part of the Williams Midstream, which focuses on gathering and processing infrastructure. And so, the business that we focus on is gathering gas from the field and transporting it to transmission lines. The Williams Gas Pipeline Group that does transmission pipelines across the country are looking at the Constitution Pipeline to move gas out of this area into New York. As it sounds like most folks in this room are aware that that's under an application, we don't have a lot of familiarity with what's going on with that project.
I see you don't speak to each other. That's interesting.
Okay. Is there anyone else that did not get a chance to speak? Sir, did you speak?
No.
Okay. I think I called your name, though.
All right. May I have a verbal aqua?
Go ahead. The state's probably...
May I have a verbal aqua?
Hang on, one second. Okay. I just want to point out, at 6:47, we're going to move this along so we can start the testimony part of the hearing, so go ahead.
Why don't you do a health impact? That's the problem. If you don't do a health impact, they shouldn't be giving out any permits.
Is that a question? What's your question?
All right. That's for you guys. You shouldn't be giving out permits then.
What is your question, sir? Is your question, why don't we do a health impact?
If you didn't talk about health impact, then you shouldn't...
We're going to answer that. We're going to answer the question, sir.
Minor sources aren't required by law to do health impacts. We go by our monitoring stations, we go by vestable technology, individual sources, not just compressor stations, hundreds of permits that we issue in this region, not just compressor stations, but there's a lot of other pipelines that are issued for a vast majority of industry, and none of them do health impacts based on the emissions. If they're a major source, then you get into that. If they're a major emitter of hazardous air pollutants, or if there's federal standards that require it, then we get into that. These require federal standards, but, you know, the hazardous air pollutants are at a level that don't require anything to that degree.
One more question. Question?
That's because you guys are immune.
Question, sir? You have a question? Can I mark him? Mark, repeat the last part.
No, there's federal regulations that compressor stations, other industry have to meet. Our state standards don't apply. We go by federal standards when it comes to air toxics, and there's certain thresholds that they have to go over to be major, and then once they're over major, then there's something we look into. Compressor stations have minimal amounts of air toxics.
Okay. Well, hang on. Ma'am, if you have a question, you can come up. You're reading into his time. Do you have another question?
So, then you don't make any health impacts?
Okay. It's a question, sir. It's got to be a question. Okay. Ma'am, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Well, come on up to the microphone, and then, ma'am, you'll be next, okay? Come up to the microphone. Say your name. Just so we get people on record.
Lott Marsh.
Hi.
M-A-R-S-H. You said a federal guideline, that the limit has not been reached on this compressor station at this point to make it a federal, require federal guidelines for pollution.
Become a major for hazardous air pollutants.
Okay. You're going to add to this compressor station up to five. Will that change that status?
Certainly, we look at the cumulative total emissions from the facility. Yeah, so we will, if they reapply and add a couple of engines, then we'll look at the total emissions of all the engines.
So, for every additional station they add, there's another evaluation?
Correct.
Thank you. Ma'am, younger, you want to come up and ask a question? Just saying, state your name for this denographer.
My name is Carol Marner, C-A-R-O-L-E, M-A-R-N-E-R.
My name is Carol Marner, C.A.R., O.L.E., MAR, NER. From what I've heard from many, many residents in this area, there does not seem to be a good system for immediate response to complaints about noise, smells, and traffic. Will there be in place, before any work begins on this compressor station, a duly constituted method of immediate response to complaints of this nature, no matter what time of day or night? Is there anything the DEP is planning to do that?
Right. Yes, we have our emergency response program at the state. Our normal inspectors, you know, come out to complaints.
Immediately?
It depends on the severity.
Because if there's a smell?
No, let me answer the question.
Okay.
It depends on the severity, health concern, things like that. If someone calls complaining that there's dust, we try to get somebody out there, obviously, as soon as possible, but it's...
I've heard that this rarely, rarely happens.
Any other question? Question?
Well, that is what I'm wondering. Are they going to put something in place, people on duty 24 hours a day, to respond to this kind of complaint? With proper instrumentation to measure fumes, and smells, and noise?
If we find a persistent problem, then there's something we look into, where we do bring out inspectors 24 hours over a period of time. But if there's no issue or persistent problem, then no, we'll come out with our guidelines that we have in place now.
Williams, you want to answer? Anybody from Williams? Williams, can you add to that?
You know, we definitely do a lot of work with the first responders in the area to make sure that they understand the risks that are around the facility. We do develop emergency response plans to deal with how do we respond and behave and coordinate with first responders in event of emergency. Beyond that, there is just an ongoing effort to maintain communication and open dialogue with the community. We have, you know, office numbers, we have contact personnel that folks can call, and we do endeavor, you know, similar to the DDP, depending on the severity of the issue, you know, we'll have an immediate response, or at least in the short term, endeavor to make a response, provided we know about it.
Well, I haven't heard of it yet. I hope you do. Thank you.
Ma'am, anyone else, anyone else want to? Ma'am, go ahead. Stay up. Say, spell your name.
Yeah, I have two questions. Iris Marie...
Okay.
Iris Marie Bloom, B.O.O.O.M. And I had two questions. One is about greenhouse gas emissions, and the question is to DEP. Why hasn't DEP done its own analysis of greenhouse gas emissions? Williams has done an analysis, and DEP has put that forward as an adequate statement. So is DEP going to choose on analysis? And if not, why not?
We do verify the emissions that they submit in the application. Greenhouse gas emissions have to be addressed now. So they do send us information, we verify it, and they do have to do emission inventory statements yearly, show us where all the emissions are coming from, and greenhouse gas would be one of those.
You verify it from studying?
Not from, not top, just from the calculations, things like that.
So you don't do your own calculations? Or do you? It's a kind of a yes or no? Do you do your own calculations of greenhouse gases?
It depends. It depends on where they're coming from, where engineers are skilled to see if something looks out of line or out of place with the emission data.
Okay, so you examine their calculations?
It's more of a verification.
Okay, so you examine theirs. Okay. My, also about greenhouse gas emissions. DEP is...
One last question, ma'am. We're going to move this along.
This is about greenhouse gas emissions. DEP is using the low figure, which is not used anymore, of 21 for methane. Methane is 21 times as potent as carbon dioxide. We're in serious climate change right now, and methane is 105 times more potent than greenhouse, than carbon dioxide as a greenhouse gas. On the 20-year timeframe, and that's the number that's being used by the IPCC, even EPA uses 72 times. So why aren't you using a higher number that's more realistic, given the seriousness of the situation?
Latest meetings we have, EPA, 21 times for methane was the number that we were using.
That's not...
No, I'm saying they published 21 times.
That's, that's for the 100 years.
Just give anybody an answer, and you can have your second question.
Well, we were told and trained to use the 21 times for conversion to, you know, CO2 equivalents. So if EPA changes the regulations or...
EPA is using the low figure of 72 times for the 20-year timeframe, which is the most critical time.
Okay, ma'am, if I have any chance to, thank you. Sir? Go ahead.
Brett Jennings with one T. I'm a counselor for Great Bend Borough. That's old English spelling. This is for Williams. With incidences at compressor stations in the region, mainly the one that blew up down south of here, that supposedly had, it was reported in the paper, you had a failure of a lockout-tagout system. And then the one up on Dunbar Road off the Laser Pipeline, that I haven't heard too much more of in the news. How are you going to prevent this one from blowing up too? Because those are both new stations, and we don't have a foam truck like Vescal does that had to respond all the way out to Dunbar Road, or down here in Springville from south, the county south of us.
That's definitely a good question. The question that you point out at Dunbar, we had a lightning strike up there that started a little fire at that facility.
I need your mic off.
The mic's up. Is that better? All right. We had a lightning strike at Dunbar that set one of the vents on fire, and we had to let it burn out there. Didn't have any damage, but definitely a little bit of a show. But there was a response, and we did coordinate with the first responders there to move that away. Definitely learned a lot working with Susquehanna County through the laser incident. And just recently, about a week ago, we're privileged to help, I can't remember exactly which fire department it was, but we're able to help purchase as a foam truck here locally in Susquehanna County, that the intent would be, it would be available should we call upon. Probably the primary thing that we would intend to do from an emergency management coordination standpoint would be to work with the first responders to make sure that we were all on the same page on what to do if there was an incident. It's never something that we want to have happen, but we definitely want to make sure that that's not the first time that we see each other is when we're out there, so we do that coordination. Beyond that, we continue to push hard to train our folks in following proper administrative controls. We continue to work hard to make sure that we're engineering potential problems out of the system, and make sure that we're monitoring and our discipline is there so that we keep incidents recurring, because that's really the primary goal. But that's, that would be the main thing, I think. I tried to hit a couple of the points there.
One more question.
Would you require three subcontractors that you have working on the site and the Williams personnel to have a supervisor have OSHA 30 safety and workers at minimum, the 10-hour OSHA course?
Absolutely. We require all of our contractors. We utilize a third-party site called the ISNetWorld, and all of those contractors have to submit all of their safety programs, safety procedures, all of the things that they have to, that they are intended, that they must comply with in order to be a competent or capable contractor. And then, you know, based on their compliance with that list of requirements, you know, we get a green light to use them. And so, so yes, we do require all of that.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to ask a question that hasn't spoken yet? We're running out of time, so I'm going to try and fit in as many. And then back there.
My name is Tom Mullen, M.U.L.L.E., and I have a question for the DEP. I was wondering, the chemical composition of the emissions, could you explain how it's different at all from the airplanes overhead, or maybe the vehicles people drove here tonight? Is it the same stuff, or something totally different?
No, it's the same NOx emissions, products of incomplete combustion, so similar, yes.
Did you speak yet? Okay, go let that lady go, and then, sir, I'll let mine go. Go ahead, ma'am. Come up here. Did you have a question back there? Or, sir, I'm sorry, sir. I saw you back there. Didn't place. It's Frank, right? Just saying, spell your name.
Frank Finan, F.I.N.A.N. I have a very simple question about being a good neighbor. If I spoke in normal voice conversation during this procedure here, I would not be a good neighbor. I'd be disturbing things. Yet, you claim that your noise, assuming the noise never hurt anybody, is this going to be the same disciples as in normal conversation? That's not being a good neighbor, that's kind of impolite and rude. Same with the odors you can have, pretending that...
Okay, sir. Do you have a question?
Yes.
This is a question part. Just a question, and you can have your testimony later.
Are you, do you still think of yourself as a good neighbor if you are not being polite?
The context of how this applies to the natural gas compressor station?
It's noisy, and they claim they're going to be good neighbors. Good neighbors do not disturb neighbors, like, as if I was disturbing. I couldn't disturb you people by talking out here in normal conversation. They claim their noise is nothing more than normal conversation.
Do you have a answer?
Our aim is to be a good neighbor and work with area residents when we have a compressor station. Normal conversation is approximately 65 to 75 DVA. Our compressor station requirement from the ordinance is 50 DVA, and we will meet the local ordinance requirements.
One more question, Frank.
Can you follow up on that? So if we spoke with disciples you're talking about, would you consider us polite, or would you throw us out if we spoke like that right now? Would you even try it?
He wouldn't throw you out. I would.
You would? Okay, you're staying with the odors. Assuming odors are not...
Well, I got one question there.
Okay.
Odors. Go ahead. Odors.
Okay. I'll make a good question somehow. If I partner here, I should leave.
Frank, thank you. Thank you very much.
Brian Muirhead.
Can you spell your last name, sir?
M.U.I.R.H.E.A.D. Just trying to get an understanding of the emissions coming from the station. How would those emissions compare to, let's say, 30, 40 truck and trailers going down the highway?
I don't have the comparison. But there, obviously, there's emissions from the truck and trailers, cars, lawnmowers, anything that burns the gas or hydrocarbon.
I was just wondering if it would be a lot more than the truck and trailers, or maybe less, or is it something comparable?
Well, the particular emissions would be higher because they use diesel fuel in trucks, and diesel is a dirtier burning fuel, where natural gas is the cleanest burning fossil fuel that we have. In comparison, though, you know, I'd have to look at the horsepower, like Mark said, I'd have to look at the comparisons as far as horsepower and the fuel burning, et cetera.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else who didn't get a chance to ask a question? Ma'am? Okay, I have to wrap this up soon because we're cutting into our testimony time. Ma'am? Yeah. Might have time for one or two more, so I apologize if we can't get around to your second. Go ahead. Just saying, spell your name.
I'm not, I guess the question would be for...
Say it, spell your name, please.
Oh, Susan McNara, M.C.N.A.M.A.R.A. And my question is, what's the difference between an FRP station and a compressor station?
An FRP station is really just, FRP is an acronym that was selected probably for convenience. It means a field receipt point. And this was a term that one of the groups that we recently merged with, sort of working with, you might be familiar with Laser, had coined this term of a field receipt point. And they can be very similar. If there's compression at a field receipt point, then it would be a compressor station field receipt point. Laser was using that term FRP, or field receipt point, to identify a place where gas would come in from the field and be received into the system for transportation. So conceptually, it's the same thing as a compressor station. They would all be different depending on what was there.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Is this done? Sure. Yeah. I'll allow one more person after this gentleman, because we do have to, we cannot hurt a contestant.
It's 7:30. I'm sorry if I'm speaking out of order.
I have almost 7:15.
Nobody's talking very loud here. I can barely hear you up there. I don't know if you can hear me now.
Yes, we can.
My name is Kim Hooberg. I've lived here for a while. Actually, I had a place for about 18 years. My daughter is here now. I'm kind of curious. What guarantees, if any, can you guys provide that the pollution from the compressor stations will not sicken people, will not make us ill? I can tell right now that there's a difference in the past several days. My tongue and my palate tell me immediately that there's a change. Now, that's poison, and don't try to tell me it is, because it is. So my question is, what guarantees can you give that your pollution won't sicken us?
Well, like I mentioned earlier, we have monitoring stations all across the state that monitor criteria pollutants, the NOx, the SOx, and there's federal standards that are based on health studies. And our monitoring stations are looked at regularly, and they're all meeting these well under the health-based standards, so.
Let him answer the question.
It's monitoring the air.
Okay, ma'am. Ma'am, you had your chance to ask the question. You could offer a testimony. He's answering this gentleman's question. I'm going to ask you to leave. If you don't stop, he's answering the gentleman's question. If you don't like the answer, you can leave. Let him answer the question. You're only interrupting. You're not going to get any further with him. Let him answer the question. Let him answer the question. I'm going to ask you to leave, ma'am. Let him answer the question.
All these compressor stations are emitting...
Ma'am, you're only interrupting. You're not helping the situation, and you're only eating up time and putting on a nice show for these people. Let him answer the question. He's answering the question.
All these compressor stations are emitting pollutants, just like our cars that we drive, just like our furnaces, everything that's cumulative, that's in the air. These monitoring stations monitor this air quality, and it shows that they're under the National Ambient Air Quality Standards.
Ma'am, no, you've had your chance to ask your question. Sir, do you have another question? Go ahead. Ma'am, you've answered, he's answered your question. You're out of line. You're not going to get any further with me. One more question, ma'am. Sorry.
Yes.
Go ahead, sir. I apologize.
I'm aware of where doctors are these days, especially now. In what way, if any, are local physicians and the local hospitals prepared to deal with people who may be suffering from air pollution poisoning? I can't tell, except my tongue and my palate tell me that I'm breathing something in that's completely different.
Sir, you're going to have to ask that question to the local hospitals. It would be disingenuous of us to answer that question at this point. You're not medical.
In other words, just after the local...
Local doctors, hospitals, yes. Give me a contact.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time. Ma'am, do you have a question? Because you're interrupting, and you're not helping the situation. Does anyone else? Vera, follow up? Okay. Follow up, go ahead.
I understand that there's at least 17 compressor stations slated for our county, and there will be more. I'd like to know why we need so many compressor stations, and why you even need all these pipelines, like this Constitution Line, 30 inches wide, to go all the way from Brooklyn to Albany, New York? Why do we need all this? Thank you. It's from Williams.
I don't know that we necessarily came tonight prepared to speak of all the market dynamics that drive decisions for major infrastructure projects, but, you know, we definitely attempt to service our customers. They have a desire to move gas from Susquehanna County and to different markets. And so to the extent there's a demand there, and there's a market in New York that wants to consume that, you know, we're going to do our best to provide infrastructure to meet that need.
Sir, do you have a question? Want to come up to the... Matt, one more question, go ahead.
Yeah, from the air permit, I could tell there's about 41, 42 tons per year of VOCs. Can you tell me what types and quantities of VOCs make up that number? Or an estimation of it, anyway?
Majority of the VOCs are formaldehyde and propane that you burn in your grill, butane that you see in lighters. There aren't really any heavy hydrocarbons out there. It's mainly propane, butane, and formaldehyde.
Formaldehyde is a byproduct of the engine combustion, so they come from the engines as they burn the methane gas.
My follow-up question is, do you know if formaldehyde causes cancer? I'll answer that. It does.
It depends on the concentration.
Hang on, hang on. Let me answer that, sir. Go ahead.
It depends on the concentration of the formaldehyde in the air and how it is received by the body.
Just a request for DEP to be less rude to the public.
Okay, thank you. You can sit down now. Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Any other follow-up questions that we have? Go ahead, ma'am. Go ahead, ma'am, if you have another follow-up question, then ma'am will take her follow-up. Getting into the closing time now.
There is a produced...
Let me pull that microphone.
Sorry. There's a produced water tank on the site that is part of this permit application. What's in that produced water and where is it going?
The produced water comes from the gas stream. As gas enters the facility, as explained earlier in the process, that water falls out in the pipeline because the pipeline is cooled, so you get conversation with produced water. And the produced water is routed to onsite produced water tanks. In the produced water, there's a lot of brine in it or salt. There are some hydrocarbons that come from the interstate scrubbers within the facility, primarily lube oil, and that is disposed, disposed and/or recycled at local facilities or transported to prostate lines to other facilities for injection or recycled or reused fracking.
And can you guarantee that the trucks that are carrying produced water will have a plaque that's saying how many gallons of brine and where it's, you know, how many gallons that truck is carrying and where it's going? Because we know the D E P does not require that. Will Williams actually track that so that the public can know where the brine is going?
We track that information as far as the public information. We submit reports to the D E P as well. I'm not sure where this would relate to air quality permit though. Where your question might be.
Okay, ma'am, you want to go? This is gonna be our last one. We have a 15-minute break.
And I didn't spell my name before. It's Dr. Reverend Ellen S O K O L O W. It's a bit of a spiritual question. Knowing what all of you know about what your industry produces and the damaging effects, my question is, how do you live with yourselves when you know that you're perpetrating genocide for generations? And I would like an answer from each person, please. Start at the end, work your way down. Just go for it.
If I shared that to you, I wouldn't be in this business.
That's right.
He's giving you the answer, sir. Please don't interrupt. Let them answer the question.
I believe people living longer now than they have any time in history, as we know, as far as we know. Our modern conveniences give us a lot of luxury in lives in our life today as opposed to living several hundred years ago with the toil that people worked at hundreds of years ago, was very difficult lifestyle. We have a very easy lifestyle now due to our modern conveniences, which include the use of natural gas in our daily lives, how we drove here today, how we have electricity, hospitals. I don't, please, I don't believe your point of view.
Okay, hang on, sir, you're out of line. Don't speak. Go ahead, sir, go ahead.
I believe we are providing a resource that's important for our everyday lives.
Okay, sir, I'm gonna ask you to leave if you continue to interrupt. You're being rude. You're interrupting. Go ahead, answer the question. I don't believe the E P is perpetrating genocide. Any, okay. Rebecca?
He didn't. They didn't.
Mark spoke. I didn't, yeah, I'm sorry. The question is, how do you live with yourself knowing what you know?
They treat us like every other industry out there. Hospitals have boilers that emit NOx emissions.
He's answering the question, sorry, ma'am. He's not. He's answering from the question. He's answering your question. Answer, he answered your question.
Anything that combusts or burns, natural gas or through engines, boilers, is gonna have the same byproducts into the atmosphere.
So you're equating all of these compressor stations with a hospital?
This is a question. This is a question. And this is your last question.
Are you equating all of the compressor stations with a hospital?
No, I'm just comparing...
Including the benefits?
He's answering your question, ma'am.
I'm just comparing that there's emission sources throughout the whole region, throughout the whole state that we handle. NOx emissions from every industry, you can think of volatile organic compounds from every other industry. We have standards that we meet. Federal standards require 1 gram per brake horsepower hour. Where the state requires them to get down to 0.5 grams, lower than what the federal's requirements are. So we're doing our job, we're meeting up, making them do best of the technology and that's what the rules and regulations demand and that's what we require.
Okay, Rebecca, do you have a question? No, that's, we're done with the question. No, he didn't speak at all. He answered your question. Rebecca, you have a question?
No.
And that's enough. You've answered your question. You can sit down. Your question's gotta be answered.
Would you tell me, please?
Rebecca, go ahead.
Last question of the evening. As far as benzene goes and the gas that we have here, it's my understanding, having spoken to PhDs in geology, that the benzene is in the rock. So when you fracture the rock, the benzene comes up from the geological formations. It is there. So I'm very skeptical when you tell me that the gas that comes out of our ourselves doesn't have any benzene, because that's not really here from PhD scientists. Having said that, I think that the VOC T P Y, tons per year for the permit for this compressor station all by itself, not aggregated, is 74.6 tons per year for VOCs. So if you're saying that that is not benzene, what is that? Tylenol, ethylene, zonine? What other VOCs are there that come up to 76 tons per year?
Yeah, I think the actual number is 42. The 76 may be prior to the control that we have put in place. But again, the primary VOCs we're seeing is butane, propane, and formaldehyde. And the numbers we see are P T E, potential to emit, so they're much higher than we'll probably see actually at the site.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the public meeting part of the evening. Questions?